Christine Jessup, Jessup and Chris Wald to keep one pot-bellied pig as a pet on the property located at 35415 Pound Road, which is near the intersection of Pound Road. The applicant is building a house on that property on Pound Road and would like to move the pig there. They currently have a house at 35594 Quince Drive, where they've had the pig for monitoring for several years. They did supply counsel, but letters from their current neighbors. And then we did receive one email from one of the residents on Pound Road that said they supplied counsel, both through email and in your package tonight. The current property at their Quince Drive home is 22.3 acres in size, and the property that they're moving to on Pound Road is 1.61 acres in size. As counsel of the lair, our ordinance states that no person shall keep any horse, cattle, feline, sheep, pony, et cetera, except with the, by permission of the city council. The administration did email all of the surrounding properties the letter. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Would they like to speak to us before counsel makes the motion?
I'm Chrissy Jessup. I have had my pet pot-bellied pig since she was 10 weeks old in 2017. As mentioned, she has resided within the city of Richmond for the past three years. We do plan on bringing her with us to our new home, which provides her with a bigger space. She is indoors for the most part, but she does enjoy the outside. We have had custom-built a house for her that is six feet by six feet, three-foot colored porch. We plan on enclosing her with a four-foot-high white picket fence that will be about 21-foot by 25-foot, and I feel like she'll be much happier out there. And to be honest, my dog is more of a nuisance than she would ever be. So I'm hoping we can keep our pet pig within the family as the kids enjoy her.
Thank you very much. It's very much in council. I'll make the motion to pro the petition from Chrissy Jessup and Chris Wald to keep one pot-bellied pig on the property subject to solid conditions, one, that it should be limited to approximately six-foot by six-foot structure with a 21-by-25 pound enclosure, similar to the style pictured in the background photos. To the, pro the study subject to one area view of any complaints received from the neighbors in the area. With the debate and support, discussion. The map that's been given to us, Jamie Andrew, versus the property.
Where is that? Yeah, it's down at the bottom of the first page there. The paragraph starting with the applicant is proposing. It just looks as though it's 108 feet on one side and 192 feet on the other side. Is the map, is that done to, you know, scale?
Are you talking this map, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, that map right there.
Yeah, I believe that's to scale.
It's hard to tell. The print is so small I can't read it. But it doesn't look like it's 108 on one side and 192 on the back side.
Is this the colored one to scale?
Is that supposedly to scale?
There's two of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure that Troy would have done it to scale.
So the outside, so for clarification, the outside of the fence, that's the outside of the fence with the, with her pig would be, that was trained under this from all the counties?
Because looking at this map, this is done from the county's GIS system, so it has the lot lines right on it.
Okay.
That's the black and white one, right?
The colored one that you were just looking at. If you look at the faint yellow lines, those are the parcel lines. That's, that's from the county's GIS system.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to see.
Go ahead.
So I haven't made a decision yet because I know we have our ordinance and I'm not a fan of farm animals. However, growing up, my best friend had a pot-bellied pig that lived in our house, and it was, it was trained just like a dog. So I am curious as to how many pounds it is, but, and it's a tough decision because they have great testimony of their other neighbors, how well they're already seen in care, and how well the pig is to be cared. So I'm curious to see if anybody else is going to speak to it. I don't have a decision right now, or I don't understand, but at the same time, I've experienced this in my own life where it literally was just like a dog, where they trained it to sit, to come, to go, like, it was incredible that this was cute.
I was about to say, I had to take my dog over for some veterinary treatment this week, and I talked to the vet that was there, and they indicated that pot-bellied pigs have been around for many, many years and are like any other pet. They have many, many that they treat and have nothing bad to say about them as pets. So it was just a little tidbit that I picked up while I was there. I have no issue with this. I'd like to hear anybody else's complaints. I will say, they were not in compliance. And, you know, for three years, and evidently there were no complaints that were brought to our police department for smell, noise, or anything else. So, you know, I don't like the fact that they were not in compliance, but they certainly are following, you know, the rules this time, which I would hope more people, as we've talked at this area before, where people, you know, we just, Rob, you brought up the fire. You know, we had a fire in a, in a close proximity in the neighborhood there that could have caused a bigger problem. We had no idea that they were keeping chickens. So, you know, we need to get people more compliant. But Jamie, the point you bring up in our packet is the neighbors where the pot-bellied pig was, nobody had any complaints. Matter of fact, they applauded the fact that it was super clean and no noise or smell or anything came from the, having the animal there. And I want to speak to the ordinance. There's some people, especially online, of course, you know, who are saying that you can't do this and this is wrong and everything else. No, it's very clear in the ordinance, the last part of the sentence, if the city council gives you an okay, it will be okay. And I believe we haven't used that ordinance loosely. We have denied some people when we felt that it could be adverse to the setting, the neighborhood that it was in. We've said no before. So hopefully we can get that record straight, that it is allowed if the city council so wishes. Any other comments on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have just a comment. Just, I agree with everything you said. With the testimonials that are here, I think that's really showing that this is going to be a good situation. It's in a good situation now, and they're moving to a larger piece of property where I think it's even going to be better. There won't be anybody behind them, and there's plenty of property on both sides. So I'm glad that they did come to us today to do that. So it's kind of ironic that we're getting testimony, the fact that they had one already, but it kind of shows the fact that they've been taking good care of it. There's no complaints from the current neighbors, because I think since they're moving out of the neighborhood, I would think that those neighbors would be honest, since they're moving out to, if they had a problem, to come forward and say it. So I'm, I'm in favor of this as well.
Anybody else?
Considering the location, I have no issues also. And I don't consider a pot-bellied pig a farm animal. I don't think it's, the purpose isn't to raise it and use it for, you know, meat processing or any of that type of thing. And the way they have the, the setting set up, it looks like it's top-notch, and I think it'll be fine.
Very good. Anything else before we go to the audience comments? Okay, we're open to audience comments. Again, I would ask that you state your name and address to the clerk for the record. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this?
William Stanley, 35525 Pound. I live right next door. And I'm sorry, but I am against the pig in my backyard. Enclosure they've built is 20 feet from my property line, and we like to have barbecues and family over in the backyard, and I'm not all that certain that I'm going to be appreciative of the pig.
Was it Mr. Stanley?
Pardon me?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Which house are you in? On the east or the west side?
East side.
East side? Okay, thank you. Anything else, sir?
Did you also get the letters from the other three people?
No.
No.
We only have one letter that states they do not appreciate having the pig in the neighborhood.
I talked to the people to the east, I mean, the west, and the one across the street, and they both sent emails. Apparently they didn't make it to you.
The one across the street did. We did not receive anything.
Yeah, just one across the street is the only one that we've received.
Yeah, there's another one just east of her, and he sent one, and the people on the corner, Lazinski, they also sent one. I think they sent it probably today.
Mr. Senior Andrew?
They would have gone to Karen. The public notice had them, send them to Karen Stagel.
Yeah.
Karen's in there, so if you'd like her to go double-check or email, we can, but I don't believe she received anything today, other than the one that we put in your packet from Mrs. Sella.
Yeah, that's the positive one.
Karen?
Yeah. Yeah, there were two in the packet.
Yeah, one, one positive and, and one.
Oh, I apologize. I thought the ones in the packet were all from, okay, so you got one of the other neighbors.
Yes.
Jay Sella and Leller.
Oh, yeah, did you read it?
Yes.
The draft?
I'm not sure how you take.
It's, yes, this would be a no.
It could be.
We voice no objection to the request by Chrissy and Chris.
I think she, she's missing an article adjective, an "a." We voice.
It could be.
I don't know, that's not how I read that.
We voice no objection.
A no objection.
Says we voice no objection to the request.
Let's keep it to audience, audience comments right now, and then we'll come back to the table. Anything else, sir?
Oh, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name's Sidney Hamm, 35410 Pound Road, directly across the street. I would hope that you would continue to enforce the, the ordinance as written.
Do you understand, sir, the ordinance is written that the city council?
Yes, I understand.
Has the authority?
I understand.
It is allowable if the city council agrees to it?
I heard you several times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We have more.
Hi, this is Callan. I live at 70267 Applewood, just kitty corner to where Ms. Chrissy lives currently. I definitely agree that anything related to the smell, noise, anything like that has never been an issue, especially on hot days. Anything like, anything that could be related to something wrong with having a pig living next door, that just doesn't happen. So I just wanted to make sure that from an experience standpoint, there's never been an issue, because that's, that's what I can speak on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Ellery, and I don't live on Pound Road, but I do live on Memphis Ridge. The reason I'm, I'm coming up here to the podium is to let you know, I've known Chrissy now three years since she moved to Richmond. For many of you on the council, I've known you my whole life, so you know I've been born and raised here my entire life. I actually have babysat Pig. Actually, she became a celebrity with the Richmond High School trap team, as they came over just to see for themselves a pot-bellied pig when I took her outside. I think what it is, is for the residents, and I respectfully appreciate where they're coming from, but when you do the research, and I had an education myself with having family owning farms, a pot-bellied pig compared to a farm pig is night and day. They are the cleanest animal I've ever seen. Actually, I, if I wanted to, I could probably get one myself in the township and keep it in my house, too, because there are no smells like a dog. You don't have to go to the groomer to get them cleaned up. Pig is extremely clean. She's not at all noisy. She, she wants to get noisy when I'm trying to bait her to get outside, just go to the bathroom, and they don't like to down themselves in mud. There are no smells, and I just wanted to speak on her behalf. She is a family pet, and the neighbors didn't even know that she was there. So I have to say, I, I hope she's able to do that, and she's going to have a cute little house, and she is not noisy. So honestly, like I said, I wish I had more pigs in my neighborhood versus my neighbor that has loose, two big, huge, gigantic dogs that are constantly breaking away and then pooping all over my yard. So that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Jack. I live at 35410 Pound Road. I just have a question about the pig. How do you handle the waste?
There isn't many. It's little puddles.
Okay. But, but how, I mean, but, but how do you handle it? I mean, how do you dispose of it?
You clean, you clean the yard.
So you just put it in the trash? Okay. I mean, you know, I guess one of the concerns that I have, I mean, I mean, because that property, we owned that property prior to this, and that there is a drain that runs in the back of that property, and, and I guess my big concern was, is how do we make sure we keep the pig poop out of the drain? Because that drain does go into the, you know, county waters, you know? And, and, and that, that to me is, you know, from, you know, from an environmental perspective, just making sure that, that, you know, we're not contaminating, you know, any of the, any of the state waters with, with fecal material, so.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. Any other discussion?
Did she, it would just be disposed of, like, dog waste would be? That's okay. That's what I just, I thought I assumed the same thing.
Yeah.
And we do have, it's a year review. So if this does not work out, we have a year review, and, I mean, we live, we can go, I'm sure the Walds will let us, or the Jessups would let us check in on the pig just to, for, to see how it's going.
I initially started this with the map, and it's been brought up by the gentleman that lives on the east side of that lot line. There's only 20 feet, and I'm assuming that's where the, from his lot line to the.
To the enclosure, correct.
To the enclosure is 20 feet.
Yeah.
Oh, well, oh.
So.
Look at the, yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay, so it's showing 108 feet is from the house.
Correct.
Okay, so that is one of my concerns, and my only concern, I should say, is why is the, the coop or the enclosure not more centered in the middle of the property so that it's not so close to the property line? And so I would ask that question of the petitioner.
So the reason we chose that spot is because that has the most flattest land, because our, our property is more on an angle or a hill. Also, there's a tree there, so it will provide her shade, so I thought that was the best spot. I mean, we've talked about even putting a privacy fence up. I don't know if that would make you happier if we did that. I have no problem putting up a privacy fence, but at the same time, I mean, it's quite a ways back from his house. I mean, our, our lot's pie-shaped, so, you know, we're more, I mean, we're, I don't, I didn't measure from the house by any means, but, and to be realistic, our property line goes right to his driveway. I never wanted to create an issue with my neighbors because we were all in such good terms up until a week ago. So, I mean, we're not here to disturb anybody by any means. We just thought, you know, having a bigger piece of property that she would enjoy being outside more full-time than anything, and, you know, as far as, you know, her going to the bathroom, we pick it up like we do the dog. You know, every couple of days, we're out there picking it up, we throw it away in the trash can, and, you know, goes out every Tuesday. And there's no way we'll ever get near that drain, because she, she's going to go right in, in her enclosure.
Okay, so let's, let's get back to my concern, and you're saying the tree for the shade, which I understand.
Yeah.
But the tree that I'm seeing, that would provide any kind of shade, it looks as though it would be much closer to the house.
No, it's not. There's like a little apple tree.
Has anybody seen this?
It's right in the square.
Is it in the square?
Yeah.
There was a tree right in the square.
Oh, right in the square?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's why you're not seeing the shadow.
I got you. So where the enclosure, or I should say, the house sits now, is that where this is shown on the map?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't, I guess I don't see the apple tree either.
Is there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, my concern, again, is the 20 feet from the lot line, and it's, it's.
And it, when I, you look on the, I'm looking on my phone on the GPS, I know the Stanleys used to have a pool back there, and that is close to where their pool used to be, and that's where they still enjoy their family outside.
Yeah.
But they're still within their property lines. I mean, the way their lot's shaped, that is almost in the center of their lot, if you really, if you look at it as a whole. And it does drop quite drastically going to Ray Swift.
Well, it seems like there's twice as much property to the west.
Yes.
I was wondering, the applicant said, you know, something about maybe a privacy fence, because, you know, she doesn't want to, you know, wreck a relationship with new neighbors. What about even like Irvites or something, you know, planting something along the property line? Maybe they can work that out with the neighbors that would be appealing that way, so it's not just a privacy fence. You know, being, it's more rustic out there and being along the river and that, but, but I guess, you know, it's no different if somebody has a dog and they built a dog kennel.
Well, that's exactly what I just started thinking myself. What, what are, you know, what am I complaining about? I, I don't know that the pot-bellied pig.
Right.
Would maybe be a better neighbor than a dog.
Right. Yeah, and they wouldn't be here at council telling us where they're going to put their dog kennel, as long as it's in their property line.
Exactly.
We did get a lot of detailed information about pot-bellied pigs in our packet here. Yeah. Pages and pages, and nothing negative.
No.
However, I mean, you have to look at the source, but still, it's people that know about these animals. So I don't, I don't know if that's what the neighbors that were against this, if they're, it's the uncertainty maybe, or, I don't know.
Well, one letter indicated, you know, protecting property values, and there's.
And there's something in here.
There's nothing that shows that property values went down in the neighborhood that they've been in.
Correct.
And/or any of the other areas that we've allowed farm animals to be in, the property values have not declined whatsoever. It would, I would, I would not hold this up because of that position there. What I would hope that, you know, if there's a concern.
Concern.
That the neighbors could work something out, but I would not hold this up over the concern of the 20-foot side yard there. Like you said, it's, no different than if it was a dog or.
Well, it's a one-year trial, too, so.
Sure.
And always, you know, if it don't work out next year, then.
Yeah, because I think what they were trying to do is kind of, one, go for those flat, flattest part of the parcel, but also, two, distance it from the homes. If you move it to the west, or, yeah, to the west, you're going to have to bring it up further, because as you move it to the west, I'm assuming, looking at the contour lines on the other map, and just the way that drops off to the Ray Swift Pond, to move it to the west, you're going to actually have to move it closer to Pound Road, so, you know, and that's probably why they came to that location, you know?
And the, the other statement was, was that the pig didn't necess, the pig's not out there 24 hours a day either.
Right.
And I want to say pot-bellied pig, because it is definitely two different animals. Any other discussion on this, council? We have a motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, motion does pass. Item number two, consideration or request to put up senior banners. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving a request from the Project Graduation Committee to utilize the banner arms on the light poles from Park Street to Heritage Drive to place banners supporting the class of 2021 graduates. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, many of their activities, prom, graduation, are either having to be adjusted or canceled due to COVID, and so last year with the class of 2020, city council approved the use of our light poles to do senior banners on them. Jeanette Mini is working with this year's class. She submitted a special vent application and is using the same person that they used last year to make the banners.
Is there anyone here from Project Graduation?
No.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve, to approve.
To approve the request.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to approve the request to utilize the poles and banner arms from Park Street to Heritage Drive to place banners recognizing the students of the class of 2021 from mid-April through June 30th to authorize DPW to install the banners with the following conditions, that the Project Graduation Committee will furnish the banners and all necessary zip ties. And there are no guarantees of exact placements of students on particular poles or locations.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I love this idea and I actually hope this idea continues past COVID. I, I mean, as parents feel comfortable with it, but we should celebrate our children and and especially in a small town, this gives us that small-town feel and small towns all across America do this. And I'm just loving that we do this. So I'm absolutely, completely and utterly support this.
I thought it looked, uh, great last year when they did it, so I'm in favor of it also.
Timeline, is this the same as, uh?
These are the same times.
Same timelines, okay.
Yep.
All right. Do we have any problems with them at all?
We didn't, um, we had a couple that we adjusted due to trees being in the way and like there was a couple that you just couldn't see.
Yes.
And there was enough leeway within the number of banner arms that we had that we could do that. So uh, from my understanding, the class is similar in size, so I think we'll be, we'll be fine that way.
Very good, good. Anything else on this, council? Be or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of board appointments. Mr. City Manager?
We have board appointments for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Recreation Board. Uh, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, Rob Garber reapplied, and for the Recreation Board, Gina Caperton and Susan Keel.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Rob Garber to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term with an expiration date ending of December 31st, 2023.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on this item?
Uh, yes, I'm I'm glad to see that Robert's, uh, coming back. I sit on the BZA board with him. He does a great job, very thorough and has a lot of great input, so I'm glad to see that.
I would agree with you 100% on that, Mike. Any other discussion on the item? Is, excuse me, is there any audience whatsoever left?
No, everyone, mom.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We also have a two-year term on the Recreation Board open. Is there a motion?
I'll make a, uh, motion to appoint Gina Caperton, uh, to the Recreation Board for a two-year term with expiration date of March 31st, 2023.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? It's been quite some time that Gina has served on here, so we appreciate her coming back again, lending us her time and talent on the board. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We have one more two-year term for the Recreation Board. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to reappoint Susan Keel to the Recreation Board for a two-year term with an expiration date of March 31st, 2023.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on this item? Same thing. Susan has, uh, been on this board also besides the Library Board for a number of years and we appreciate all of her time and effort on that board. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We thank them. Item number four is consideration of appointing a council liaison to the Recreation Board. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the appointment of an ex officio member on the Recreation Board in accordance with the Recreation Board bylaws. Mayor Rix is currently serving as the ex officio.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to reappoint, um, Mayor Tim Rix as the City Council Ex officio member on the Recreation Board with an expiration date of March 31st, 2022.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion? Thank you for your support.
I hope you still want to serve.
I do, I do. I I enjoy, uh, uh, being on the rec board and, um, sometimes when John hasn't been able to make it. I I can offer our side of things when they start going in a direction that maybe would be the opposite of what we, or I offer them what I think the city council would like to see. And, you know, when they're going in a direction that we would like to see them go in. So, um, John does a a great job of being there and Margot does a great job of being there also. But I like to be there, give my two cents. I enjoy recreation, uh, issues in the community. Hope that I've done a good job representing the council for a number of years on that board. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of bid award for the grit classifier in the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. City Manager?
The fiscal year 2020 to 20, in 2021 budget includes $100,000 in funds for the replacement of the grit classifier equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. The grit classifier is located near the headworks of the plant and removes the, uh, sand and gravel from the effluent. Um, council previously approved the purchase of a new grit classifier from Lakeside Equipment for $37,500. Uh, the bids that are before you tonight are for the installation of that piece of equipment. Uh, and as a low bidder is process piping in the amount of $36,300. Uh, if approved tonight, the, uh, equipment we expect to be delivered in the next couple of weeks, uh, with installation in May.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the expense of $36,300 to process piping for the installation of a new grit classifier equipment with the expenses charged to appropriate line item in the wastewater treatment plant equipment replacement fund.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? Low bidder, within budget.
Yes.
Nice to see. Be or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Our final, final item for consideration is scheduling for the budget workshops. Mr. City Manager?
City Council normally schedules, uh, three budget workshops, uh, to go over the budget. Um, recent practice has been, although sometimes varied, uh, has been to have them on the same nights as city council meetings. Uh, usually the second meeting in April and the two meetings in May. Unfortunately, uh, due to a number of circumstances, uh, I I'm fairly confident we will not be ready, uh, for the 19th. We would be ready for the 26th. The the two meetings in May are the 3rd and the 17th. Uh, and we would, so if we do those two meetings in May, administration, certainly up to council, will do whatever works best for everyone else. But on the, on the Mondays, uh, sometimes council likes those days, uh, the 26th, the 10th or the 24th would all be fine as that third meeting.
Thank you. Council, would you like to, uh, drop our normal rules and and work this out for dates?
Sure.
One of the things that I was telling myself was, well, why don't we just go 3, 10 and 17, the the Mondays in May? But sometimes we like to get added information. It'd be nice if, just thinking, if we went April 26, May 3rd, and then skipped two weeks. If there was any other information that we wanted that the administration didn't have for us, we could go on the 17th and give them two weeks to find out that information. That's the only thing I was thinking about. Sometimes we we want to do that.
I won't be available on the 10th anyway, so that works better for me.
Oh, well, there you go.
There you go.
How's that look for you guys?
26, 3rd and 17.
26, 3rd and 17.
Yep, looks good for me.
What time will we start?
Should we?
26, I'd go, I'd rather start early.
Earlier?
6 o'clock.
6?
36.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then you can lie and let, make it heavy that night and then go late together two nights.
Do we want to try 5:30 and then see if Emily's good with that or?
It can be your 5:30, I know I can, so.
Or do you want to?
Yeah, it's it's a workshop, so I can pull a 5:30. I I, um, I've got a game the next, uh, day at 4 o'clock, so I'll have a practice, which usually is, um, usually is over at 6, but that's not a problem.
Why don't just go quarter to?
I have coaches. Pardon me?
About to go quarter to?
No, 5:30's, uh, works for me.
Yeah.
5:30?
I just, I know they usually, the first one usually lasts the longest.
5:30 for all, all days?
Yeah.
Well, maybe on that day then.
5:30 every
Okay, so 4:26 would be 5:30.
Alright.
And then we go over to, uh, May 3rd, uh, council meeting. So what time is that normally a 6 o'clock?
No, we don't
Not yet, that starts in June.
No, I mean, uh, by the time, do we usually do an hour before the council meeting?
Oh.
There you go, 5:30 again.
Yeah, just keep them all at 5:30.
5:30.
5:30 works then. Okay, 5:30 and then the 17th.
5:30.
What's is on there? Okay, so 5:30 on the 17th. Okay, so, uh, 4:26, uh, May 3rd and May 17th. Any other discussion or anything else that we need to talk about on that? Well, then let's have a motion.
I make a motion to schedule the following budget workshop meeting dates to review and modify the city manager's proposed fiscal year 21, 22 city budget as necessary on the dates including April 26, May 3rd, and May 17th, all starting at so, at 5:30 PM.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any further discussion on this item? These meetings, uh, again, will be held at City Hall. Um, and as far as we know right now, it would still be held in the same format that the council meetings are. Uh, the public is, uh, right behind us here on the other side of the wall with, uh, both, uh, audio and and video, uh, back and forth between the two rooms. But the the budget meetings are open to the public. And what we will do is what we have done in the past. We start at 5:30 on our workshop. We take a five-minute break at 5 minutes to 7. And then our normal city council meeting will be held at 7 o'clock. And more than likely, once that meeting is over with, we will go back into our budget workshop meeting after the council meeting. There's nothing else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager. Sir?
Uh, just like to congratulate the rec department on a very nice Easter egg event. Uh, they kind of did a little different this year, but still got a lot of positive feedback.
Very good. Nice job. Okay, moving on to council comments. Uh, John?
I got nothing.
Jamie?
Nothing, sir.
Dennis?
Um, just wanted to congratulate the Richmond cheer team for
Yes.
becoming state champs and, uh, wrestling team placing in the top four.
Yeah, very good.
It's, uh, quite an accomplishment with, uh, what's happening with the year and their schedules and not being in school, being in school and and, uh, and the coaches, uh, trying to work around all their, all the issues that were going around. It's, uh, tremendous they were able to keep everything going and that's a testament to the school and the kids and the coaching staffs and everybody alike, so.
Yeah. Yes, and, uh, they knew that this year Dundee, who usually Richmond Dundee go for championship most years. Uh, they met them in the, was it the semis?
Semis, yeah.
And, uh, and lost to them. I'm, I'm assuming they won the state championship hands down.
Hands down.
They have a very, very strong program right at the moment, uh, strong wrestlers from what I've been told. So good for them and congratulations to Dundee as well as our guys making, you know, in the top four in the state. This is fantastic. The girls, they pulled one out from what I understand in their last, um, event, if that's what it's called. And, um, they, uh, were able to pull by, was it tenths? Jamie, did you follow that?
Yeah, it was their last round.
Round?
Yeah, round.
So it was like by tenths of a point that they won the state championship?
Yeah, I think it was within like three or four tenths of a point, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, so no, that they really, they played with heart at that point, I would say. As a, a longtime coach myself, they played all heart. Um, that's fantastic. We will have them. With the COVID, it's gonna be a little bit different, but John and I have talked, we will be inviting, uh, Kelly Mathis, the the head coach, uh, to come and and, uh, see the council and hear our appreciation from the community.
Also, I just wanted to add, I forgot, um, Dan McKernan was individual state champion at heavyweight for Richmond.
Senior this year?
Senior this year and
At 285, was it?
Yeah, it's weight class, uh, that he goes up to, but, uh, he's also got a Division One scholarship to his Southern Illinois.
Where a brother or brothers have
Brothers, uh, Colton wrestles there right now and then Jake has graduated and he wrestles also.
Okay, yeah, very, very, uh, proud of that family, what they've done over the years with, uh, their wrestling and and whatnot. It's, uh, another proud source for the city of Richmond and in our community.
Yes.
Great. Rob?
I'm all set.
Michael?
Um, just one thing, the, uh, under, as the council representative for SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, I did attend their Zoom meeting of the general meeting. So, um, they're hoping that they'll be able to start doing things in person again, so looking forward to that. Because usually those are pretty good because you visit different areas of the SEMCOG area and they have tours of wherever you're at, so. It's been a little bit different, so, but, uh, still, I'm I'm glad to attend those and represent our city, so. Just want to let you know that I, I still don't.
Very good, very good. Um, did anybody happen to, uh, see, John, I don't know if you, uh, uh, watched that, but there was a, uh, a webinar, I believe, uh, MML today? Did you happen to catch that?
Uh, I was actually, they often on their website replay them, so I I was watching last week's today. I'll watch today's tomorrow. It's easier for me to kind of stop it
Yeah.
and be able to take phone calls, so I missed the one today, but I I intend to watch it. I just haven't. They, there's a list of them on their website if you ever want to go back and watch all, any of them.
Okay, well, there's, uh, there was talk, uh, that, uh, I think there was four items on their agenda and one of them was, uh, the Open Meetings Act.
Yes.
And I was wondering if there was a a major change there?
I saw that and it was right at noon, uh, so I figured I'll I'll watch it tomorrow and provide you any update.
So you can go back and watch those?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
I tried. I can send the links to council. It's, um, on their website. They have the, I think what they're called, MML Live is the kind of the weekly thing that they're doing. And then they also, in between those, sometimes have just special ones, um, and you can go back and watch them either on YouTube or some other format, I believe.
Okay, um, it'd be interesting to know what
Yeah.
if anything has changed on how we meet and
Yep.
how they allow us. Uh, the only other thing I have is, um, I'm not sure, but it was our understanding that the, um, school board would be addressing our, uh, offer on the auditorium, uh, at the next meeting. If if they're able to, I know they have a lot going on in the school district with all the building and everything else, but if they're able, and with COVID, uh, I'm sure they have a lot of things. But, um, if they are able to, I would hope that, uh, uh, our school board would see to it that, um, you know, any information they need, they can contact the city manager and, um, get that information, um, before their meeting, uh, hopefully. So that we can, uh, hopefully move towards, uh, getting the odd back up and running again, um, in the way, shape and form that that building should be. And, um, I would hope that they could see it, uh, that the city of Richmond is the best way to go, um, bringing that building back, uh, as a true civic building. Uh, it's badly needed, uh, to be a civic building in this town. There are so many recreational type, uh, things that, um, we are hearing from, from the residents and the the entire community. And I just think it would be a great thing if we could work together to, uh, let the city, um, take the building and, uh, renovate it uh, into what it should be again. So hopefully that happens. Uh, we go to the calendar. Today being April 5th. The first day of yard waste collection. Um, there are rules to, uh, yard waste collection, uh, that are on our website. But, uh, they will be starting pickup, uh, tomorrow, the 6th. Uh, of course, the kids are on spring break all, all this week. The the 6th. Uh, of course, the kids are on spring break all, all this week. The, uh, is there a BZA meeting, John?
I don't believe there's a BZA, I know there's a Planning Commission meeting, but I don't believe there's a BZA meeting.
No. Okay, so Planning Commission will be meeting on the 8th at 7 o'clock right here. It said, oh, no, is that gonna be a Zoom still?
No, it'll be just like this.
It will be here, okay. And then we go on to, um, the, uh, let's see, what we got? Okay, the library book sale. Are they going to have that with the COVID?
I will have to verify with Julianne. I don't believe they are, but I will get something out to council.
Well, if you have questions, uh...
Yeah.
You can call the library and, uh, find out if they are having the book sale that is on the city's calendar. Uh, two weeks from tonight, right here at City Hall, we will be meeting on the 19th for the next regular scheduled city council meeting. And I believe that is it. Was there anything else that we needed to put on the calendar? I don't believe there is. Okay, we move on. There is no closed session this evening. Is there any other business for the city council? Be you not, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most been made and supported. There's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us tonight.